Welcome to regular session, Mayor and City Council meeting 6:00 PM, Wednesday, December 6, 2023, City Hall Complex. City Council chambers, all this been into order, would you please rise to a pledge of allegiance?
Mr. Gracias. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which sex, one nation, on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. Invocation for today's there will be Mr. Brent Martin, a high priest from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints, sir, please do this the honor.
Our Father in Heaven, we are here at this time, we give thee thanks, the birth of all, for thy son, Jesus Christ, whose birth we celebrate this month. We thank thee, Heavenly Father, for the heritage which is ours, we even remember those lives that have been given in our behalf, that we might have the freedoms which we enjoy. We remember at this time of the year, those who lost their lives in Pearl Harbor, and we are, they continue to bless their families as we remember them. And we thank thee, Heavenly Father, for all those who have served in our services to maintain the freedoms which we enjoy in this great nation. Now, Father in Heaven, we pray for this meeting, the business is transacted in this meeting, that the lines of communication will be open, that those who speak and those who hear may hear and understand each other, and that the items that are taken care of on the agenda will be heard and understood properly, that the right decisions can be made. We thank thee, Heavenly Father, for these freedoms which we have that allow us to meet and communicate and govern ourselves. Now, we pray for thy Spirit to attend that which takes place in this meeting this day, and it will be best for our community, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Are you okay? Okay. No technical difficulties? Start with a call to the public. Mr. CJ Wallace, please come forward and state your name and address. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, address forty-nine ninety-six East Mediterranean Street in Sierra Vista, Arizona, eight-five-six-three-five.
Thank you, and welcome.
Awesome, thank you, sir. Okay, so I'm just gonna let you know, I really appreciate our mayor, vice mayor, the council members, the councilmen, the city attorney, the city manager, the city clerk, and our wonderful police force. I know this is a thankless, sometimes, a very thankless job that you do, and I want to say that I appreciate you so much in your part for retaining the freedoms of this city, and consequently, the state and the nation. So what you do is very, very important. I just wanted to go ahead and continue to encourage you that as we pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, it's to the republic, not the democracy. And I wanted to actually give you a story about a man who was a farmer, and he went out sowing wheat into the field, right? And there was wheat, and he went to bed and did his usual routine, but when the stalk, the cornstalk grew up, there were actually tears that leaped onto the wheat. And these tears were actually very dangerous to the wheat, to the corn, and was able to actually tear the corn down. And so the man was wondering, wait a minute, I only planted corn, why are these tears here? The same thing has happened to the United States of America. Republic and democracy, they're very two different things, and I actually wanted to give just a very stark difference here. In its infancy, as a republic, early America flourished and eventually became the envy of the world. Citizens enjoyed limited government, kept the fruits of their labor, and were a responsible, moral people. Slowly over time, the personal liberties and prosperity many generations have enjoyed gave way to the democratic rejection of constitutional limitations on government, trading citizens' liberty and prosperity for the so-called security of massive, overreaching welfare programs. A democracy is the majority rule that disregards the Constitution, which leads to overbearing government, crushing debt, and erosion of individual minority and property rights. So knowing these differences, the republic is actually rule of law, the democracy is actually a mobocracy, meaning tyranny by majority. So if there's fifty-one percent that disagree, then they can rule over the fifty percent. And we need to remember that in the United States of America, the reason why a lot of people want to come here, not to disparage any other nations, I've been around the world, and there are beautiful nations, and I think the only thing that people would say is not beautiful about them is their government. It's because the government is overreaching sometimes, gets into your wallet unnecessarily, gets into, you know, your different businesses unnecessarily. And so I just wanted to encourage you, continue to remember that this nation is a republic. The reason why people want to come over here is not what the government does, but what it is limited from doing. And that's what made the America great. And so we do recognize that there are some shortcomings, right? However, the shortcoming comes a lot of times because government overreaches, and nobody thinks that they can do anything against it. I'm here to just let you know that you're a testament that you can do something against it. If it's unconstitutional, you can say stop, like my time is almost up, and I'm sure the mayor is gonna say stop anytime. And so that is called nullification. The state legislators can do that, you as council members can do that, you do have the power to stop, you know, if there's bullying going on, and they want to push something that's against your rights, you can say, hey, wait a minute, where is that in the law? Shout out to the city attorney, he knows what I'm talking about. So I really appreciate every one of you, and thank you so much, and I wish you the best.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. That was only one, thank you. Next, we go to presentations. A, Presentation University of Arizona Crop Extension Program, Dr. Rodolfo Martinez.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members, City Staff, and Members of the Public. My name is Rosie Stewart, and I am a Family Consumer and Health Sciences Area Assistant Agent based here in Santa Cruz County. Thank you for the opportunity to present on our work. The Cooperative Extension Service is a nationwide, non-credit educational network that addresses public needs by providing non-formal higher education and learning activities to farmers, ranchers, communities, youth, and families throughout the nation. The University of Arizona was designated as the Land Grant College in Arizona under the Morrill Act of eighteen sixty-two, and it has developed extensive community-based networks to provide extension services statewide to diverse populations since it was founded in eighteen eighty-five. The mission of the Cooperative Extension Service was established by federal law in nineteen fourteen Smith-Leaver Act, to take education from the land-grant universities to rural communities, increasing agricultural production and improving the quality of life. Two basic tenets of cooperative extension work have been supported throughout the years. First, extension's mission is to make science useful. Cooperative extension believes in the potential value of science and research to improve people's lives. Second, cooperative extension is based on the needs of people in communities and counties. Extension work brings people together in local communities to solve local problems. Today, the extension programs in Arizona serve as a statewide network of knowledgeable faculty and staff that provide lifelong educational programs in agriculture, youth development or 4-H, natural resources, family consumer and health sciences, and community and economic development for all. The University of Arizona Cooperative Extension, Santa Cruz County, is an outreach arm of the University of Arizona and the Division of Agriculture, Life, and Veterinary Sciences and Cooperative Extension. By improving lives and communities, our mission is to engage people through applied research and non-formal education to improve lives, families, communities, environments, and economies in Santa Cruz County. The University of Arizona Cooperative Extension conducted a statewide needs assessment survey in the fall of twenty twenty-two to better understand community needs and priorities. Cooperative extension users, topical experts, and members of the general public from each county were invited to participate via online or paper surveys. Santa Cruz County had a hundred and sixty-five survey responses. The top six priorities identified by Santa Cruz County respondents are quality K through twelve education, recruitment and retention of qualified teachers, early childhood reading and language skills, water quality, infant and child health, screenings and early intervention for developmental delays. In addition, the University of Arizona Cooperative Extension in twenty twenty-two completed an assessment of the economic impact of cooperative extension in Arizona. The main question being answered with this assessment was, with all the rapid and dramatic changes that we are experiencing in our society, can the Cooperative Extension Service model established over one hundred years ago be relevant? The answer, based on the assessment undertaken, is that extension may well be more necessary and relevant today than ever before. Extension generates a return on events, on investment of four dollars and eighty-seven cents for every one dollar of state investment, and improves economic productivity annually by one hundred and thirty-eight point five million dollars through our programs and initiatives. This depicts our structure, we have around twenty-five team members plus several 4-H volunteers. The majority of our Santa Cruz County team lives here, and several were born and raised in this area. Whenever we have job openings, we make a concerted effort to hire local community members who are familiar with the area and the people living here. We support the communities we serve by providing jobs and contributing to the local economy, since the majority of us live here, shop here, and our kids go to school here. The University of Arizona Cooperative Extension, Santa Cruz County, is a vital community leader in creating and applying knowledge to help people build thriving, sustainable lives, communities, and economies. We have three nutrition programs in Santa Cruz County. The Expanded Food and Nutrition Education Program, or as we like to call it, FNEP, that does direct nutrition education for families with young children, to include grandparents raising grandchildren. The Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, which we call SNAP Ed, that does some direct education and works to change policy, systems, and environments for overall healthier communities. And the Diabetes Prevention Program works to prolong or eliminate the onset of type two diabetes. All three focus on increasing nutrient-dense food and reducing foods that could contribute to illness, increasing physical activity, and decreasing sugary beverage intake. All three help reduce or eliminate the onset of some chronic diseases. Some of the impacts from the programs in Santa Cruz County, from the nutrition programs in Santa Cruz County, include an increase in vegetable and fruit intake, reduced sugary beverage intake, and a reduction of hemoglobin A1C levels in the Diabetes Prevention Program. These impacts and the work of the programs helped reduce the overall cost for participants and communities by reducing the consumers' costs for groceries while also reducing the direct and indirect costs of healthcare. Thank you for your time and attention, I will now pass it over to our next presenter, who is Carla De La Cruz.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Members of the Council, thank you for having us today. My name is Carla De La Cruz, I am the Child Care Health Consultant, sorry, the double thing throws me off, and Positive Discipline and Financial Literacy Instructional Specialist at the University of Arizona Cooperative Extension, Santa Cruz County. As a child care health consultant, I get to work with eighteen early child, sorry, child care and education programs in the county, including childcare centers, home-based providers, and preschools, to promote a safe and healthy learning environment by providing guidance and technical assistance. In twenty twenty-two, I was able to work with thirty-four early childcare and education programs and reach sixty-two childcare providers, and I was able to facilitate two hundred and fifty-five health and safety trainings. With Positive Discipline and Financial Literacy Programs, I get to do something a little bit different. The Financial Literacy Program teaches participants to understand how to successfully manage their own finances and save for the future. In twenty twenty-two, individuals who participated in the program reported being able to pay off their bills, start savings, and purchase a needed item. One local participant reported that they were able to save two thousand four hundred dollars by following the program's recommendations. Positive Discipline is a research-based curriculum that provides parents the tools to teach their children social and life skills. Twenty twenty-two statewide data shows that the children of some of the participants received higher grades, had fewer behavioral and substance abuse challenges, or substance misuse challenges, better mental health, and higher social competence. Data also shows that there was a fifty-nine percent increase in understanding of a child's belief behind the misbehavior, and a forty-two percent decrease in parents yelling at their own children. Thank you, I will now pass it on to the next speaker.
Good evening, my name is Jennifer Argos, I'm the Program Director for the Family Resource Centers in Santa Cruz County for the Cooperative Extension. Hopefully, you've heard of the Family Resource Center, everyone's saying, yes, yes, mostly yes, awesome. So the Family Resource Centers address a need in Santa Cruz County because we have, we have what's called a childcare desert, so we don't have enough childcare centers and spaces to adequately fill how many children are in Nogales and Rio Rico in Santa Cruz County in general. So research shows that students who are academically behind in kindergarten might never catch up, and if you don't have an early childhood program to serve these kids, this is what can happen to them later. So the results of, this results in poor student achievement, and often, and is, these are the children that, you know, drop out, have to go to alternative schools, or need remediation. And so what we are addressing is called the achievement gap, and it's what happens in kindergarten, when the kindergarteners show up for school, some of them don't have any preschool, some of them might have skills of a seven-year-old, so that they can show up of anywhere between three and seven years old. So that's what we're trying to address, we're trying to bring the kids that are not at benchmark up, so that they don't have as many, so much remediation. Since two thousand and ten, the University of Arizona Cooperative Extension has received funding through First Things First to house these two programs. We're the administrator of the grant, we have our partners, the Nogales Unified School District, Santa Cruz Valley Unified School District, and Patagonia Elementary School District. We additionally partner with Alfredo Velazquez, you know, the County Superintendent of Schools, and he is the voice of early childhood, and also he sponsors our Early Childhood Awareness Month, it's coming up in February. The Family Resource Centers are a hub for parents with children zero to five, they learn important skills to prepare their children for kindergarten, they build support systems, and they connect with community resources. We are most known for our parent-child interaction classes, our playgroups, that's what parents generally come to do, but we know, even though they're coming for these fun classes, the kids are learning important skills to get ready for kindergarten, and the parents are also learning important skills to be better parents and reduce the stress of being a parent. Annually, the center hosts seven hundred classes and serves about five hundred families. Parents who attend the centers are more likely to make a circle of friends, to have a support system to help ease the stress of parenting, and children who attend the centers show improvement in executive functioning, which is a predictor of kindergarten readiness. More, the more children and families that are prepared for the transition to kindergarten equals higher academic achievement, less money spent on remediation, and a shrinking achievement gap. Families engagement in their child's school provides a healthier school system, and ultimately a more productive community. So we love the Family Resource Center, if anyone wants to come visit the Family Resource Center, we're right down the street, and we would love to have you. I'll pass it on to...
Hi, everybody, thank you for the opportunity to present to you today, my name is Norma Elisa Ruiz, and I oversee the 4-H Youth Development Program here in Santa Cruz County. And we have a team of adults, certified volunteers, we have about thirty, who are trained to deliver safe and positive experiences to youth in all the county. We have a club in Sonoyda, we have a club in Rio Rico, two in Nogales, and actually, we just started another one, three in Nogales, and we're just growing. It's, we have a total of, like I said, I think about two hundred members, we're growing and growing. And this picture here is the Healthy Living Ambassadors, they are the club in the Nogales High School. We want to promote, so the kids, the survey identified that the needs of the community were to have youth internships, apprenticeships, and mentoring for career development with a ninety percent, and well-paying job opportunities at all skill levels. So in 4-H, we empower the young people to be true leaders, through their projects, youth, they gain confidence, they learn how to work well with others, they get independence and compassion, they learn public speaking, community service, and civic engagement. Our main pathways are STEM, healthy living, agriculture, and civic engagement. We have seen great improvement as we see the kids thriving. We have different opportunities statewide, like the Youth Summit, we have the Jolt, the Journey of Opportunities for the Leaders of Tomorrow, the Ignite Conference in Washington, we have the, and kids connect with U of A employees, and they start, when they go to college, they start sometimes with a part-time job, allowing them to interact at a young age with their professors. Here are our clubs, we have the Healthy Living Ambassadors, we teach them physical activity training, so they can go out in the community and provide this to other people. We have the Agriculture Club in Sonoyda, and the Civic Engagement Opportunities in STEM, and there's an example there with Ivan Becerril, and who was in charge of the Texting Makers Program, who was teaching digital skills to adults in the community of Santa Cruz County, great impact, he went to Washington, delivered a speech to Mark Kelly, and he's working at the U of A, this is one of our examples of how our program fosters positive youth development and leadership. And then, Yuridia in the STEM Club, she did the NASA program, went to NASA and internship, and now she's promoting this program, she wants to bring it to other kids in the community, and she's raising funds at the moment. The Healthy Living Ambassadors, another huge impact is how they, and actually, the kids designed this project. They thought that there was a need in the senior citizen facility of Villa Paraíso, and they said, we want to do physical activity classes and help them with their chores, also giving nutrition sessions to the adults there. It's been amazing, the adults there love their participation, and they end the classes with zumba, and this also allows to help with the mental health. There's a lot of adults in the community and everywhere who are isolated. It happened a lot in the pandemic, and still happens, so this has been a huge impact. And I'm not gonna show you the video because I think I ran out of time, but Ivan Becerril again, he's been amazing, we now have the, another team of digital skills teachers of youth, and they are going out and teaching about programs like Microsoft, drone flying, Excel, how to do presentations, and they just want to empower adults everywhere to be able to find better jobs, enter into the workforce, and improve their lives and other families. Let me know if you have any questions, oh, by the way, thank you for the awesome Christmas activity, Lysa Parade, it was, our club participated in it, over forty kids paraded, they did the house, it's number seventeen if you want to go and look at it, and so it was an awesome opportunity, not only for the community but for the youth, they loved doing it, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna skip this one. The, my name is Rodolfo Martinez, and I arrived in Nogales three months ago from NAU, and I'm the director of the program here, and my expertise is in horticulture, soil science, and natural resources. So I'm developing several programs, starting from outdoor gardens, community gardens, I've been working with the community in Tubaq, with the community in Patagonia, we're starting up a program here with the Nogales group, and we're working with high schools, with Nogales High School, with Rio Rico, and Lourdes High School, Mexica, several schools, so we are already training them on how to start up a garden, and this is just showing some pictures of what I have done in the past, and the idea is to promote mesquite, which is a natural tree that grows everywhere, and the main attribute of mesquite is that fixes nitrogen from the air, and it enriches the soil, so the crops can actually use nutrition done by the mesquite. And as you can see in the pictures, these crops are around mesquite, and they're just twice as much, as big as the ones that don't grow besides the mesquite. I'm also promoting greenhouses, which is in the lower left corner, and greenhouses allow you to produce throughout the entire winter season, so you start planting in October, and then you harvest all the way to April, with no heating, just a greenhouse structure, no artificial energy. And I'm also promoting shake houses, which are in the lower right, which allow growing during the warm season, so it's too hot outside, but a shake house reduces the temperature by thirty degrees, and so you're able to produce amazing vegetables, even though when it's so hot outside. I'm also developing what I call the Santa Cruz Emerging Leaders Program, and this will be a two semesters program, and it's gonna start in the fall twenty-four, in the spring twenty-five, and it's gonna select five outstanding students from each of the high schools to be trained in every component of leadership, including the functions of government to society, businesses, social organizations in society, and also all the understanding of the issues we have now, from global warming, drought, and all the problems we have with environmental degradation. And so they are exposed to everything we have here in the county, including the programs that are undergoing to resolve these issues, and they will be exposed to the leadership that we are having today, and so they can get an idea how they can be a leader in the future. And when they go to school, either U of A or another school, they have an idea, if they want to come back, they have a way to really be inserted right away into our society. So that's gonna be a program that is gonna, it's been approved by U of A now, and I'm just working out with getting grants, because it's gonna be a thousand dollars per student, so I'm writing up the grants so we can fund the twenty-five students we are hoping to get into this program. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it for, doctor? That's all the presentation? Councilman Doyle, man, go ahead, turn on your mic, please. Councilman Doyle, turn on your mic. Thank you.
I have a question, but I guess I wasn't, you went to your seat right away, and I didn't have the opportunity to ask. Kind of going back on all that you covered for the extension program that's being done here in our community and all that. It's great to see it. I was kind of familiar, but I guess my mind was running back since I was a kid, how much it's grown and developed over the years and how fortunate for our kids nowadays, especially the ones that the parents maybe don't have the means to be able to support a lot of these things that you guys offer now. Well, I'll say, at least it's there, it's being offered, and it's being covered, and the parents don't have to come up with that cost. And I was thinking right now, going back before for the gentleman that spoke about the democracy and the republic. Is this covered more by the democracy than the republic or form of government? That's my question. Well, because it's being funded, I guess, to support underprivileged kids, really.
Actually, we, our team, we have a staff, right, about 20 some. But in regards to the Forest team, it's, we get the help from volunteers. They volunteer their time. So, it's just me, the staff person for Forest, and then we have 30 volunteers in the county.
Yes, but I saw where the government does provide certain funding for these programs.
Yes.
And so, my question really is, I think, to me, it seems like this is the balance between both forms of government.
Yes. And you do have a grant.
We're fortunate that the kids that are underprivileged are able to take advantage of these programs that are really going to help them to be the leaders that we need in the future for all of our society.
That's what we're addressing. And I wanted to go back to the slide that Rosie did and really emphasize that that is who cooperative extension is. If you go back to the mission and that slide, the reason that our name is cooperative is because we have all the cooperation of the federal, state, and local funding. And so, we, you know, that goes back to the, some of our funding is through private grants. Mine's through First Things First. But we, and his funding is through the, you know, some of our funding is through the university. But the cooperative extension gets, we gather, that's the cooperation part, is that we really are community-based, we're community-driven, and we are able to serve everybody because we have that cooperation.
So, just my other question is, so you guys didn't put up this gentleman to come in?
No.
Kind of clear up our minds a little. No, okay, but it's good. It goes hand in hand. Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Any other questions? You know, I want to thank you, you know, when I saw Dr. Martinez at the first agricultural or, you know, support at the Fresh Produce Association. You know, it's something that we got to do for the community. It's something that we have to open the eyes of the, you know, the students and the families. What's out there? What's out there? What opportunities are out there? What, you know, ventures with the U of A are reachable for the kids? You know, a lot of times, you know, especially in a small town where, you know, we don't have all the technology that other big cities have and all that, you know, we struggle getting the word out. And I think that was my biggest reasoning for giving you the opportunity, and I really appreciate you guys doing it because it's a way to get out the message. What's out there for the kids? What's out there for the families? You know, and, you know, all the way from five years old, you know, from zero, you know, from one day, one day. You know, so all this is an opportunity for the community, and it's a great way to, you know, I've always said, you know, the more you mingle, the more the families get together, the more you're going to make friends, the more you're going to get related, and the more you're going to see opportunities. So, I really want to thank you for you guys coming down and doing this for us. If you guys have anything that you want to share, leave for the city to put in a webpage or something where we could help out in any way. You know, city manager, my secretary Judy's back there. Julia Armendades, whatever we need to help you and support, count on us. Excuse me, I think, council, would you guys agree on that? You know, it's a win-win situation. Opportunity is the way to go. So, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Martha. Do you have something? Okay, thank you. Yeah, the copies are on our binders. All right, thank you. Next item, actually, the presentation for PPEP. Dr. Arnold had to get, catch a plane to Guadalajara, so he postponed it for our next meeting. So, we move to item six, financial monthly report. Ms. Jean.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I am recovering from being ill, so
Thank you.
if I sound a little funny, that's why. Your report for tonight is October financials. So, for October, we should be at 33.33% of our budget. If you turn to your table A. For revenues, my page is, here we go. For revenues, we have collected $9,957,930, which is 37%. And for the shared revenue, it has, we have collected the $3,627,161, which is right at the 33%. For expenditures, we have expended out $11,693,768, which is 30%. If you move on to table B, this is your sales tax through October. In October, we collected $944,569. At the end of October, we were $94,778 above this point last year. If you move on to table C, those are your general fund accounts that are above the 33%. A lot of them are working their way back towards where they should be. A lot of it was the beginning of the year, encumbrances and capital purchases. Moving on to table D, this is our HERF and our overweight fees. For HERF, we have collected $872,352, which is 34%. And for overweight fees, we have collected $115,659, which is 46%. For expenditures, for HERF, we have spent $1,619,549, which is 39% of the budget. And overweight fees, we have expended out $2,096,523, which is 34%. If you move on to your table E, which is your sewer account, we have collected $1,209,627, which is 40% and expended out $899,773, which is 37%. Table F is your water account. We have collected $1,411,612, which is 41%. And we have expended out $2,529,636, which is 42%. The final table is table G. That is our sanitation. We have collected $992,775, which is 35% and expended out $916,673, which is 25%. Are there any questions?
Councilman Grados.
A question on table B.
Sure.
Maybe I'm not reading this right, but on your report, it says that we're currently $94,778 above this point last year. But when I compare both tables, there's like a deficit of almost $500,000. Is the $94,000 at the end based on future sales tax we want to collect? Because the way it shows is we're collecting less sales tax than last year. We've had some good months, but yet, it shows that we're at least $500,000 less than last year at this point. Can you explain that to me?
Okay, so the $94,000 is the, I'm sorry, the $94,000 is our year-to-date. So, year-to-date, the $94,000 is, we're $94,000 above what we had budgeted at this point year-to-date. The number above that, the $494,000, that is what we're short compared to last year.
Okay, so the one we budgeted is, the black one, the red, is what we are short. So, we are short that amount?
Compared to this time last year, yes.
Is that a concern?
I had a discussion with Mr. Bermudez beforehand. And Mr. Bermudez has the unpublished November numbers. And like I've told you guys before, when we do the numbers, it's not based on the first of the month to the last of the month. It's when the state deposits the money to the city. So, a few months, you'll see a much higher one, much lower one. And for November, the unpublished numbers right now are $1.7 million. So, compared to quite a few of our other months, if you look at the year, it's much better. We had a very large deposit at the beginning of November that would have included part of October.
December's trending that way, too, because the news says this is a record year for purchases and stuff.
I sure hope so.
It continues that way. Thank you, Jean.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Grados, so on table, on table B, you see in October that we brought in 944569. So, the reason that is because that money needs to be documented the day it's deposited. So, three days later, the deposit came in at 1.7. So, the $700,000 added to the last year kind of puts us in the same, in the same area as we were last year. So, and that gives us a, from 494 in the red, it puts us at 510, $510,084 in the black. So, it's just, it's just the dates when that money's dropped into the bank.
Right, sir.
Jean, I have a question. Do you have, do you have an idea of what percentage of the revenue comes in through Morley?
So, the report that we get from the state is a simple drop for the entire city. I can go and see if I can get more intensive and more, see if I can find one that's separated. But what comes with the deposits is for the entire zip code that we have. But I can request from the state to see if I can get it broken up.
Because the reason I'm asking is, you know, that they closed Morley Gate. So, and this is for the month of October. So, November should drop a little bit more or maybe a lot more. So, I don't know what the revenue percentage is on the Morley side of the city. So, that was my concern.
Yeah, it's my concern, too. Talking with a few of the shop owners down there, their sales have gone down. But I will definitely get with the state and see if I can get something that's a little bit more broken out.
Right now. All right, thank you.
Councilwoman?
So, you can actually disaggregate that amount, that just revenue that comes from Morley?
Right now, I can't, but I'm going to see if the state, I'm going to ask the state if we can.
I'm sure the other municipalities do that, to target which area.
A certain area. Yeah, I don't know if we ever have.
Aggregate that.
I don't know if Nogales ever has, so that may be why we're not giving that report. But I will definitely get into that for you guys and find out.
Councilman Doyle?
Going along with that, could you also target the other area of councilor? I mean, like, separate, because it seems like we might be losing some tax revenue here, but doesn't mean that the people aren't coming across it. They might be going to maybe the Mariposa area or another area in town and spending some more. If we could just get, kind of so things will balance out.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll get it for the entire city. I'll see where I can get it split.
Any other questions? Thank you. Go ahead.
The only other, the last page you have is the updated ARPA funds. You will notice on the left column where the initial amounts that were designated and approved by the council in November of 2022. You'll notice in green is how much each one of those departments have spent from the initial monies designated to them. And on the right-hand side, you'll see the total amount that remains. So, if you go down and you add up what is remaining, it's $1.797 million. But you need to remember that a couple of months ago, $1.5 million was approved by you all to pave our two major water areas. So, that actually leaves us with $297,974 that can be used based on your guys' discretion. I just wanted to make sure you guys had an update. I know Ms. Montiel had asked for one last month.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Montiel.
Just to clarify this to the public. So, the ARPA funds, there's not, you know, $2 million just floating around. No. So, in the previous administration, these ARPA funds were already designated. And you could see there, which I know you can, but I'm just kind of, it's rhetorical, just so we can be on the same page. Back in 2022, the $3 million was already allocated to these departments. Okay? So, what's left from that ARPA funds is basically $297,000.
Everything else that has been spent or allocated by the council.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman Grados.
The $1.5 million that we diverted to pave the Royal Road in Rancho Grande, were real allocated from which accounts? And also, the 297 are remaining in which accounts? Because they're already allocated, they're not just floating there, right?
They are allocated. Most of that $1.5 million is coming from the water sewer and the streets. Then, we've included part of the P and Z, but the P and Z hasn't spent any yet. So, really, the $297,000 that is left should go towards our community development, our planning and zoning. As you can see, there was a little bit left over in parks and in police because what they had purchased did not cost as much as what was allocated to them. So, what we basically did is we added up our total that was left was the 1.7, and the note is on the side of the 1.5.
Follow-up, we can reallocate it if we see a need by a vote of the American Council.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Correct. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other question, any other comments? Thank you, Jean. Next, we go to reports. A, update the Chaya Park project and Palo de Driving Range project. Ms. Travers.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Please, there's some pop-ups there. But I'm going to start with the driving range. I know that's a big one on everybody's mind. We did finally get electricity installed on November seventeenth out there. IT is working with our team to install Wi-Fi in the ball machine. On the right-hand side is the ball machine. Um, talking to IT, we're looking at antennas to be able to get the signal into the steel, um, because it is weatherproof, therefore we need to find the best way to make sure we get that Wi-Fi. So everything is card activated since minimal people carry cash now. It makes it easier for our finance department, as well as for people enjoying the driving range, to go ahead and rent balls. We also have, um, the electrician is going out actually tomorrow, not next week. He's going out tomorrow to install the machine. Parking signs have been ordered. I'm waiting for those to come in, and those distance signs were installed this week. There are more pictures, there's the dis, the distance markers. We did have to put up a chain in the back of the building to keep vehicles from driving onto our tee boxes. We had some problems with the irrigation system because we had people driving up to the tee boxes, getting off and teeing off. And then there's our tee boxes. We are going to put parking signs across the way to avoid people walking through the premises since it's not fully open, yet we want to avoid any other damages on to the buildings. Questions before I move over to the Shea Park on the driving range? Depends on the Wi-Fi. That's, that's my holdup right now is the Wi-Fi, because the parking sign should be here this week. That's all we're waiting for. It's the Wi-Fi and the installation of the ball, ball machine right now. And since I'm not the technician, I don't want to give a date with the Wi-Fi.
Balls.
We have everything.
Collector and everything.
We have everything else ready to go.
Um, what else?
I'm thinking by the end of, before the end of the month, we should be able to have a ribbon cutting.
So we'll do ribbon cut.
Putting pressure on IT there.
We'll do a ribbon cutting there.
Okay, we'll work on a date.
Hit, hit the balls. It's not, not ribbon cutting, we'll, we'll, we'll use golf clubs instead of scissors.
There you go.
Okay.
Drive right through the ribbon. All right, with the Shea Park, I did give you guys a handout. Um, this was the letter that was given to us by Mr. Anderson from M. Anderson Corporation. Right now, if you noticed, driving in today, we did have, um, shade structures going up. Last week, the basketball courts were resurfaced, and the dependable drinking fountain was installed. Right now, they're finishing putting in the play structures. December eighth through the twenty-second, the gravel filter fabric and engineered wood chips that are all the piles that you see on the field right now will be placed into the play equipment areas. The fourth through the second, twenty-second, the fencing, the backstop will be completed. Behind the backstop, they did put a retaining wall, um, because we had that slope before. So they put up a retaining wall, because we will be adding bleachers for those games as well back there. Um, January eighth through the twenty-sixth, the granite pathway, the irrigation completion, and the exterior steel fencing will be installed. We are adding pickleball courts. There was an area next to the basketball courts that originally, I guess, was an outdoor volleyball court. We decided to change those into pickleball courts since we, that is the craze right now. So they're actually, we're going to be able to put two full pickleball courts in with the separation and fencing back there. February first through the twenty-third, the infield mix, the amendments, complete placement of park equipment. And then the fifth through the ninth is the final cleanup and installation of sod. Um, there are some variables on the dates here, you know, the timelines can be affected by weather, delays in materials and products. Also, the dates of the sod installation will apply based on the decision to go with overseeded sod being implemented or non-seeded sod. And that's something we're going to sit down, David, myself, and Mr. Anderson to figure out the best way to go with our fields to get it to our community. And then I did add some pictures. Um, now these are covered with our shade structures. These are the play structures. There are, Mayor, there will be the ADA swing installed here as well, like the one at Anza. The backstop. And then that's the beginning of the walkway path where that drive-in entrance is on the north side of the park, and the ramadas are just beautiful. There's a resurfaced basketball court, our water fountain with different heights, including those if people are walking through with their pets. And they didn't put the picture of the pickleball area, but, so it's moving along quickly, not as quickly as we would like it to, but it's coming up really nice. And Mr. Anderson, instead of letting things go with the, with the contingency fund, looked at areas that needed extra, just like the bleachers and that retaining wall, to ensure that the park was something that we could be very proud of. And I don't know if you've noticed, the, the tables and trashcans, everything is concrete. So we won't have the pigs knocking over trashcans, we won't have people moving park benches. So we did add those into cement.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Vice Mayor.
Renee, uh, on the steel, on the exterior steel fencing, is that around the whole park?
It'll be on this side and on the backside.
On the back, and is that wrought iron or?
I'm, I'm not sure. I don't think it's wrought iron. It's not, that was not in the plan. That would have jumped the price, and we had to cut prices.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Madillo.
Yes, uh, I, I, what I understood was that the volleyball court was deleted from the plan?
Yes, we're ma, we changed those into pickleball courts, because they were just going to be demolished. And instead of demolishing the whole area, we used the concrete that was already there and, and just added some more concrete, and we're making pickleball courts.
Oh, I see, uh, I, I'm now, you know, I'm not that familiar with the pickleball. I know, I, you know, it's something that I know we need, uh, there's always, uh, interest and, but I, I noticed in the past that the volleyball courts were used, especially when there was big groups, like church gatherings or something, and they always had their teeth. So, so I'm wondering, eh, was there any way that they could have still had both of, both of those?
There's not the space, and that's, that's why that space was going to be eliminated. Instead of eliminating, I worked with Mr. Anderson to add in pickleball courts, because we have had a large request for those all over the city.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, Renee, one more question. Uh, you said here, March fifth through the ninth, final cleanup and installation. When is the park going to be ready to be?
That all depends on the installation of the sod. Once we decide which, which sod we're going with, either non-seeded or overseeded, and then we'll be able to have a, a completion date and ribbon cutting date.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman? No? Okay, uh, Renee, you know, thank you for the update. Uh, I think there's a lot of people looking into, excited on getting this, uh, this park open or reopen. You know, I think it's going to be, you know, great to have added those pickleball courts. You know, Mr. Doyle, those pick up, like Renee said, uh, the volleyball courts were going to be taken out. So, you know, uh, Renee saw the, the advantage of being able to put the, the pickleball courts. So we took advantage of, of being able to use what was left in concrete instead of, the demolishing. So I think a good choice. No, tell Mr. Anderson that, you know, a little disappointed on, on the timing. Uh, you know, I was coming on the end of December, but, uh, you know, and he had great weather. Can't blame the weather this year, but.
Right.
But, uh, I know, uh, talking to some guys there, you know, there were issues with, with, uh, some materials and stuff like that, which is uncontrollable. But I think, um, as long as he does the great job that it looks that he's doing, you know, let's continue and, and get it done. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we move to update, uh, Mr. Gradias on, uh, employment, uh, benefit trusts, uh, being that you're now, you're the council representative.
Correct.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. After our November sixteen meeting, I'm happy to report that our, our trust is very financially stable and well. Uh, we do not have any large, uh, claimants at this time through September, which means there are claims in excess of fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we do have a stopgap in place in case we do get any of those, so we don't foresee any issues for our upcoming year. Uh, there was an improvement on the Virgin Plus usage. Twenty-two percent more employees are enrolled now, and I'd like to thank the directors and please keep pushing. At least two people have reached their ten thousand points, and means they get two hundred and fifty dollars in pulse cash. So that's a goal, up to six now, correction, up to six now, so, uh, we're really making an impact. It's a great app. It's easy to follow, put it on your phone. Uh, I started it, haven't kept up with it, but I will do a better job of it, uh, because I'm preaching for it, but it does help the overall health of our employees. And the trust also voted unanimously, unanimously to provide two premium holidays for our employees in December. That means they will not be getting a deduction for their, uh, premium for their medical for December. The city will still be responsible for their part, but the employees will get two holidays, premium holidays. So a little extra benefit for employees at the end of the year, because we're getting involved, it's making a difference, and our, our trust is very healthy. And that's all I have for the trust right now.
Thank you, sir. Uh, go ahead, uh, Councilor Madillo.
Yes, Mr. Gradias, uh, you said they put like a safety cushion or a stop for the, up to fifty thousand. Can you expl, uh, give us a little more detail on that?
The trust bought an insurance per se, which called a stopgap. In case we go over fifty thousand on any one claim, then the insurance kicks in and picks up the difference after the fifty thousand. So it's just like a safety net for the trust. Yeah, we'll pay up to fifty thousand, but then we have protection. And what we pay for the stopgap insurance is a lot less than what we would pay in case the medical bills ran up to eight hundred, a million or whatnot.
Would they cover that, that insurance?
Yes, that is.
Oh, great, that, so, so they're covered.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Gradias, thank you for, uh, representing the council in that, uh, EBT, uh, committee. Next, we move to, uh, number eight, discussion item. Discussion direction, possible action, uh, funding request by La Linea Art Studio, Ms., uh, Councilwoman Montiel. Mike?
Turn it on, I'm getting there. I put this item on the agenda to fund La Linea and Whitney Museum with four thousand, uh, dollars to be split between two entities evenly, which would be two thousand each. All your information, Council and Mayor, is in your packet, as you well know. I don't have to read it to you. Um, Mr. Corey, um, submitted a letter back, a revised letter back in November sixteen of, of this year, obviously, uh, where he is, uh, actually, he's writing out all the, uh, events and activities that take place in La Linea Studio and Whitney. And so I'm in support of, um, collaborating with La Linea and Whitney as, uh, we already are collaborating with these two, uh, the La Linea Art Studio and Whitney Museum. And so I wanted to put it out there so that we can vote on this, uh, on this.
Okay, any, any, sorry, now me?
Now you.
Any, any comments? You know, this, uh, La Linea and, uh, Whitney, both, uh, are supporters, and it's, it's a mix, La Linea, the, uh, Whitney, Consulado, the city. I think we all work together in, in, uh, in helping, helping out the community. And, and we look for more functions. Uh, I actually, when I saw this request, I asked what, you know, because it gave more of a June through November, and, and they already have, they already have over, you know, thirty events, uh, starting January nineteenth on. So I think it's good for the community that, you know, right now, I see a positive thing that everybody's asking more events, more events, more events. So let's keep on working on that. Um, with this said, uh, you know, I move that we approve, uh, you know, two thousand to each, to each, uh, organization and, uh, do, do I have a second?
Second, second.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I just have one question.
Go ahead, sir.
On my documentation, it says it's five thousand dollars, and there is no recommendation from staff. So I would just like to know where city management stands on this.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Gradias. Um, I think anything that's done in the downtown area right now in conjunction with our revitalization program that we're, that we kicked off a couple of months ago, it's a plus. Uh, we're trying to get more people downtown. We're trying to get Wi-Fi downtown as, as we speak. Uh, if you notice, we strung some lights, uh, from the port of entry, Morley Port of Entry, all the way up to East Street. Hopefully, next week, uh, Unisource was, uh, kind enough to donate some poles where they're going to go on the NCD parking lot, so we can string lights all the way up to, um, all the way up to, uh, Court Street and Morley. Uh, we're talking about putting eventually, hopefully soon here, the next couple of months, hopefully, an arch at the beginning of, uh, Court Street and Morley. So that will be the entrance to our historic downtown area. We're looking at, uh, making those bathrooms ADA compliant. Um, we're looking at again, uh, today, we were talking about, uh, installing Wi-Fi at Karen's Park, so we can have more, uh, youth going over there, doing their homework, people just socializing, doing social media, whatever. Get more people down there so we can, um, hopefully get more businesses to open up and, and, and provide more entertainment and, uh, options for our community. So I do recommend that, uh, that these, uh, these funds be allocated to both entities.
I'm in support of all these issues. The only thing is, these are future projects, and I want to make sure that we don't handcuff ourselves, because I know there's going to be more cost, uh, especially if it's a joint event. And are we limiting them to just this, or are we going to open it back up when the time comes? Because we're planning for the future, but if we act on it now, are we handcuffing ourselves to just, well, this is what you get? Uh, in lieu of, or are we going to actually also provide, uh, police personnel, city personnel, and stuff like that? Each event is doesn't, isn't done with at least five thousand dollars. I know there's going to be more cost involved. So how would that affect us in the future?
These events, uh, from what I've experienced, have been done indoors in their facilities, both at the Whitney and, uh, and at La Linea. Um, so, uh, they have not gone out to the street, so at the present time, I don't foresee that happening. Uh, but if it does, uh, we will adjust accordingly, but in the near future, I don't foresee that happening.
Councilor Madillo.
Uh, yes, Mayor, uh, you know, I've gone to a few of these events, and I'll tell you that even at, at this point, I never expected to see in Nogales, you know, such, uh, so, you know, it's, it's humbling to see that we have people out here that are bringing, enriching our lives with music, art, culture, the, of, uh, of the arts. And, you know, they're, they've been undertaking this and really mu, pretty much doing it on their own. Like I said, getting funds from grants and other things. I think it's just great that, uh, that we can pitch in and help and be part of it, because it is our city. It, and the thing is that when people think about moving in Nogales, they not only look for public safety, uh, the kind of, uh, doctors we have and the schools, but they also are looking to see what kind of art and music and culture in those, in those areas. And it's, and it's also very entertaining. I mean, it's, they bring some really, uh, great people here to our community that present these programs and, and, uh, we're really blessed with them. So I, I just, I'm glad that we, we're able to be a part of it. And, and I think Nogales is going to grow more and be recognized more in, in this area of the state because of these programs. So thank you, Council, for supporting this.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I agree with, uh, Councilman Doyle. La Linea and Whitney Museum have, have done a lot for the community, especially in that part of the city. Uh, I've been to some of, of their events, uh, and they bring, uh, art and music that was never here in Nogales. You know, they've been, uh, they bring people from New York. You know, they've been, they bring people from New York, they bring people from other parts of the, of the U.S. that we never had before. So they're doing a great job. They, they, they have done it without us before. So it's, it's good that we start helping them and, and bring more, more of this type of entertainment to the city.
Good, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Vice. We seem to have a minor issue here where the application has only been for La Linea. And I know that in the body of the application, it specifies La Linea's Art Studio and Whitney Museum. However, I believe that we would need to fill out another application for Whitney, which we can bring it up the next council meeting and, and allocate those other $2,000 to them.
Yeah. You know, David is here and do you mind coming up, David? I know you wrote in collaboration with Mr. Corey, you wrote the initial, you filled out the application and then you wrote out the letter. So maybe you can highlight that. If you could turn on your mic. There you go. Thanks, David.
Thank you.
I'm the treasurer at La Linea and La Linea is the nonprofit. We have the, the nonprofit is La Linea Art Studio. The Whitney is part of La Linea, so we fund the Whitney Museum. So any money that would go, would go to La Linea and then from there it would go to the Whitney.
That would be okay and that would be in conformance with what?
That would be okay and that would be in conformance with the agenda requirements because the agenda just talks about the.
La Linea, yeah.
The Linea and if you're saying.
Yeah.
The Linea is part of.
Yeah.
I mean.
La Linea is a nonprofit, yeah.
Then the actual funding then is to La Linea.
Correct.
For the full amount, not to be divided because that's not before the council on the agenda.
Okay, yeah. And, and thank you for the correction, Joe, but.
We can allocate the half.
Yeah. And when you and I talked about that, I think that's what we talked about is allocating the $4,000 to La Linea. And since that's the nonprofit and you're writing in behalf of La Linea, so that's how we will work it out. And it's pretty clear in your letter. I don't know if they saw the letter, but maybe the way I initially spoke about it at the beginning, kind of got a little muddled, but sorry about that.
No, that's fine.
So I can make a.
Also, just for your information, that most of the events that we have, we usually try to get grants to make those events happen.
Yeah.
This money is, would be money for operations because like, for instance, in September, we were down to our last $800 and that had to pay, you know, the lights, the water, the trash, the insurance. And thankfully, we're using the billing without paying rent right now, but we eventually will have to pay rent. That's the, the nature of the world. We have to do that.
Exactly.
So yes, we are looking for monies for operations, just daily operations. And this would, this would help tremendously.
David, I don't, I don't think we have a problem with allocating those funds. There was just a question about the agenda. That's it.
Okay, great.
Everything's good.
If there's anything else.
No, I was just going to ask Mr. Machado. Can I ask Mr. Machado, does Councilwoman Montiel need to rephrase the motion?
Well, there's no motion at this point.
Okay.
So the, the motion would be is.
There was.
Well, there was, I'm sorry.
Worse than a second.
Okay, and.
So I, I gotta rephrase it.
Yes. So whoever made that motion, yeah, withdraw it and just approve the application to the entity, La Linea, for that amount, the total amount.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll withdraw my motion on, on the way I stated it on separating. And I make a motion to do the, the funding directly to La Linea's Art Studio as requested in the application. Any discussion? Go ahead, sir.
The application I have still says 5,000, so is that a.
Just cruise.
That only allocating for 5,000, La Linea. Well, he made a motion for four.
But he withdrew the motion.
But he.
Let me, let me rephrase it again. Let me withdraw it. Okay, okay. I'll withdraw my motion again and I now make a motion to fund La Linea an amount of $4,000. 4,000.
The application is 5,000.
The application itself.
Okay, but Ms. Montiel, it was.
So we need to correct the.
Yes.
All right, let, let, let me clarify. I think we're just, okay. The only applicant before you and the only item on the agenda is the, is the amount of 5,000 to La Linea. Okay? So it's, if that's approved, then, then 5,000 goes to La Linea. And they've indicated how they intend to use it, but that's not part of the conditions of the approval. Does that make sense?
But we, we can reduce the amount.
Oh, you can reduce the amount. Doesn't, doesn't have to be 5,000.
Yes.
Yeah. Whatever amount you agree.
That's why I'm saying, you know, I, I move to approve it with, with, with the amount of 4,000 now to La Linea as requested by Councilwoman Montiel. And do I have a second? Any discussion? With that said, all in favor? All right? All opposed? Motion passes, 4,000 to La Linea Studios. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Next item, liquor license, item A, consideration and possible action on liquor license 2023-13, approval of recommendation of the insurance of liquor license for Mr. Luis Alonso Cañez Porques for Pomos Pizza, 3131 North Grand Avenue, Nogales, Arizona, 85621, number 012 Restaurant. Any discussion? All in favor? All right? Motion passes. Going to orders. A, in consideration and possible action of orders 2023-12-066, an order of the council for the city of Nogales approving agreement with Greater Nogales Santa Cruz County Port Authorities. Any discussion? All in favor? All right? All opposed? Motion passes. B, consideration and possible action of order 2023-12-067, an order of the council of the city of Nogales approving the professional service agreement with the Nogales Santa Cruz County Chamber of Commerce. Go ahead, Ms. Montiel.
Mr. Remus, thank you very much for expediting the contracts along with your staff. I really appreciate it. I know that these two entities will provide services to the city in, in a right way. And, and I just personally want to thank you for moving on with the contracts, getting it done. Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Thank you, Councilwoman. If I may just.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Councilwoman. It was, is a group effort. We, it took us a couple of months to come to an agreement here, but it was a group effort by, by John and, and Mr. Machado and myself. So it, it took us a while, so, but, but thank you.
Thank you. With that said, all in favor? All right? All opposed? Motion passes. Item C, consideration and possible action of order 2023-12-068, an order of the city, excuse me, an order of the council of the city of Nogales modifying and amending chapter 18 of the city of Nogales Personnel Menu. Any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Pat, John, you, you reminded me. There, there, on, it would be 802, a section 1802 vacation leave. Instead of annual accrual, monthly accrual rates, it, there should be, it should read annual instead of monthly, which makes a big difference. And, and so it's on packet age 67.
On the annual, on age?
Yes. Where it says monthly accrual rates, it, it should read annual accrual rates.
Okay.
And if, if the, someone would, would move to amend chapter 18 to indicate that, then, then we could move on, then vote on the motion itself.
Okay. Well, I, I moved, moved to amend chapter 18 or go ahead? Move to amend chapter?
It is so moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right.
Vote on it.
All in favor? All right? All opposed? Now, now, now the motion, right?
Right.
Now the motion on C, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion passes.
And thank you, John, for reminding me.
Item D, consideration and possible action of order 2023-12-069, an order of the city of Nogales approving an agreement between the city of Nogales and the International Association of Firefighters, Local 2763.
Want, one small change on this and two, which is not substantial, but just, you'll indicate, just so you'll know what we're doing. On page 12 of the agreement, that the term of the, of this agreement is set forth in section, in article 11, section 1, which is November 1 through June 30, 2026. The cover page has incorrect starting date. So we'll change that, but what controls is, is the, is the body of the complaint. So we don't need a separate motion for that. I'll just correct the title page, but I want you to know that before we voted on it.
All in agreement? Any comments?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead, Ms. Montiel.
Again, thank you. I know that this contract weighted firemen were very anxious about getting it completed and getting it approved. So I want to thank you, Mr. Remus, also, and Mr. Machado, because I know you work very closely with the, the union. So thank you very much for getting it done. I'm sure they're happy and it's a win-win situation for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? That's it. All in favor? All right? All against? Oppose? Motion passes. Item E, consideration and possible action of order 2023-12-070, an order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, authorizing a grant agreement between the Tohono O'odham Nation and the city of Nogales on behalf of the Nogales Police Department for funding in the amount of $29,800 through the Tohono O'odham 12% grant fund. Second? Any discussion? All in favor? All right? All opposed? Motion passes. F, consideration and possible action of order 2023-12-071, an order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, authorizing the city manager to sign a petition in annexation request by Nogales Suburban Fire District for five separate land parcels located in Kino Springs, partial numbers 153-02-001C, 153-02-001B, 105-44-10, 153-02-001A, 105-31-010. Second? Any discussion? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Stuart Mousse, have you had any concerns or requests from the people living in that area?
No, sir, we haven't. So, so basically what this is, Nogales Suburban is trying to annex that portion and they need signatures of every property owner in the area. The properties that we do have are, are vacant properties. So we need to, they need to approach us and see if we sign for those five properties as far as to in accordance with the annexing of Nogales Suburban. But if you want any more information, Mr. Luis Chaboya is here representing Nogales Suburban or, or Rio Rico Fire or Toubac. I'm, I'm not even sure who he works for anymore. But anyways, he can answer all these questions for you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, sir. Hold on, hold it. There you go.
Okay. I believe you, you might be aware that Rio Rico Fire Department is now serving and taking care of the Nogales Suburban Fire District. And Nogales, the Rio Rico Fire Department is going to annex or incorporate Nogales Suburban into Rio Rico Fire Department. When they were getting ready to do all this, you can see on your map, all the gray area is in Nogales Suburban. The white area is not. But a mistake by the county 41 years ago, there's a lot of properties that are paying the tax for the fire department, but for some reason, they were not included. So all we're doing is just to make sure that they're included into the fire district. There's no tax, you know, for the city of Nogales. It's just a formality to make sure that we're all in agreement. And, you know, we've had a lot of signatures saying yes. And again, it's just to clarify a mistake made by the county 41 years ago.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Doyle, Councilman Doyle?
Yes, Mr. Chaboya. So initially, that mistake now that, well, it has this property and probably some residence on it, some residential homes that live on there.
Yeah, there are, I forgot how many, but there are a few that do have homes there, but most of it is vacant. Most of it.
Okay. But, but this is going to be part of the city if it's, if it's approved all the way through that, or, I mean, is it going to be annexed to the city or is it, how is it, just to be clarified that?
Okay. I, I understand that the city is looking at annexing some of Kino Springs, correct?
Yes.
Okay, this has nothing to do with it. All we're doing is making sure that Rio Rico Fire takes care of Nogales Suburban area. If, and maybe Mr. Machado can tell me, if the city annexes some of the area, then it'll be transferred from Rio Rico Fire to Nogales Fire, correct?
Right. Councilman Doyle, what it is, is just like any annexation, there has to be a, a certain amount of signatures acquired from the property owners within that annexed area, right? And, and that's the, the reason he, Mr. Chaboya had to come to us rather, to the council rather than the city managers because that's the, that's a council decision whether or not to sign the petition for those, those properties I have in there. As far as the city's concerned, in terms of liability or anything, it, 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 it doesn't affect us one way or the other, but it does affect the, the, the petition. But it does affect the 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 petition in in terms of being, moving forward for the annexation. Now, if it moves forward and the area is annexed by Rio Rico, then again, it doesn't affect us at this point. If at some future date, the city will want to annex any area of the district that that within our annexed area. Then that area would be, would come, would be. It would be taken out of the.
Rio Rico.
Rio Rico's district. The the city would have priority, in other words, in its annexation.
Because to start off, this is just the the fire department is doing this, not Rio Rico because it's not incorporated.
No.
No, no, this is the district, the Rio Rico.
Just the fire district, okay.
Which is annexing, is making a bigger area for themselves.
Okay.
But again, it doesn't affect the city at this point.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay.
Any other questions? It's more of a service contract, but this area wasn't included, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, thank you and thank you for for bringing this up. And I think the the residents around that area will be, the ones that have built, will be very happy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that said, all in favor? All right. All opposed? Motion passes. Before I forget, Ms. Travers. Mr. Josh Rubin has some knowledge on Wi-Fi and all that. And the people that know that handle it. He could help us. I know, I'm pretty sure he he wants to go hit the golf ball over there. All right. Thank, thank you. Mayor and Council report on events. Mr. Doyle, start it up.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, you know, they cut me a little short here because of all the events. Starting from the holidays, you know, Thanksgiving and and the Christmas parade. You know, I guess I kind of overshadowed some of the other things that I can recollect. And I'm sorry I didn't write them down, but but I'm not, I'm not going to mention a lot about the Christmas parade. Because we have some people here in council that are a lot more active than I was. And I'll leave it, I'll leave it to them to give the highlights. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lopez.
Yeah, I just want to report that we're done with Casitas Navideñas displayed at Caden Park. I want to say thank you to everybody that helped. Renee, thank you. You and your crew did just unbelievable job. Thank you. They're done. They already decorated the twenty five casitas. And I still have pending seven petitions that they wanted to be part of it, but we have no more casitas, maybe next year. We're having the Sinfonica event Saturday at the Nogales High School Auditorium. And there's only sixteen more tickets available, so if you want to be there. They are available at Cinderella Mariposa, in case you want to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Gracias.
I'll take my time to acknowledge the Nogales Lions Club. I was fortunate and privileged to take part in their annual Christmas event where they take members from our community, children. Take them to JCPenney and buy them a good amount of clothing, then take them to the shoe carnival, bought them some tennis shoes. And ended up with a breakfast. These are underprivileged youth in our community. And they're up to seventy five kids, hoping to grow it to ninety next year. And it's a great organization. I hope that we back them in the future personally or as the city. Because they're doing great things in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Montiel.
Mayor, I'm just going to let the public know that the floats, the winners of the floats will be announced in the January meeting. And Mr. Bermeus will announce the later on the date for that. And the winners will be announced and also a couple of just shout outs out there. And kudos for people that really helped in getting and organizing the parade. But I do want to say that the Nogales Police Department did a great job, Roy. Really good job organizing the parade. Thank you to them.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, also, I want to thank the Police Department and everybody that participated in the parade. It was a lot of fun. You know, it's the first time that the city has a float in a Christmas parade. It was fun participating, building the float and 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 working with the people that that volunteered their time. And I think, you know, I don't have to say anything about what the parade looked like. Because I I think more than all Nogales was out there and and probably probably part of all Rio Rico was there at the parade. So I, you know, it was a very good event.
Thank you. November was actually a very busy month, you know. I want to thank, you know, all the way from the Veterans Parade. It was great, you know, good, good turnout. I think both entities did a great job. The. Veterans did, I think. Did a great job in 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 the aspect of getting the word out and everything. I heard VFW had a great turnout at their party and and same with with American Legion at at the Fletcher Park. I think, you know, it was a win-win situation. I was at. In the movies on November twentieth, celebrated with the mayor over there. The the bait bait de la revolución, which is revolution for Mexico. You know, they really went out of their way to showcase Nogales as being their, you know. We have a sister city with them and agreement. And, you know, they made a logo and everything. They had a. I don't know where they got so many people, but it was a great parade. And, you know, I can't say enough about the Christmas light parade. You know, it was tremendous. You know, everybody, police, fire, Renee and all the staff, Ariza, Judy, everybody went out of their way. Judy, my assistant, did a great job decorating the cars, you know, even my wife was there. Mr. Bohorcas' wife was also with my wife with the first. What was it, banner, leading the parade, you know. And, you know, let me tell you, those elves that we got. I had one kid that said, I already gave out ten bags. I already gave out fifteen bags, you know. We were filling up those little lunch bags that we had from the city. And, you know, they went out of their way to hand out those candies to to the community. That's what it is. That's, you know, the community coming together, the community, you know, stepping out and and visiting and and talking. You know, it's a win-win situation. I want to thank everybody, you know. Roy and everything, John, everybody, you know. Thank the the council and everybody for for supporting, you know, Lisa, you did a great job with the float. You know, don't want to miss out anybody, but let me tell you, it was a great parade. I had great, great calls from community members. How, you know, it was very organized and and very lightful, you know. This year, you know, all the people that got in and and came out in the parade decorated their cars and decorated, you know. You know, their runners or what they call them. S two V, como se llama? UTVs and everything, you know, everything was decorated. The schools went out of their ways. Decorating their floats and all that, you know. When I did the little speech at the, in front of the judges, I warned them, I told them, you guys have a hard job. Because I saw some of the floats driving into getting in line. And let me tell you, it was a hard job. So whoever wins first, second, and third, or fourth, let me tell everybody out to the public, everybody won. It was a great job for the community. There's no, really, you know, let's take it as it. We all won as a community because we had a great event. Thank you. Yes, sir.
If you allow me to give special thanks to some organizations that I, it seemed like a long month and I kind of left them out.
Go ahead.
I want to thank the Lions Club for their annual support of our veterans. I was invited to the function they had. And I just want to thank them for honoring all the veterans that were there. And they do it on a on an annual basis. Also, I want to thank Lincoln School for doing their annual invitation of all the veterans that went to Lincoln. And I got invited by Vice Mayor. Mr. Bohorcas or Vice Mayor Bohorcas to accompany him, also to Challenger School, I believe. But I was, it was at the same time, so hopefully next year they'll do it at a different, different dates or times. But but anyway, they they served us a a great breakfast there. And and of course, it was an honor to address, I was able to speak to the children of the school. And and it's always good to impart that spirit of patriotism and and let them know that they're appreciated for the efforts. That that they do, sending letters to our servicemen and everything else they do. So I want to thank Lincoln School and Challenger. Well, our Vice Mayor was there. But the other one that I want to thank also that that they also bring our veterans and honor them is our Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber was definitely there for for the special function they had for veterans. And they honored one of our former council persons, that Korean veteran, Mr. Cesar Parada. They gave him special, special honor and mentioned for for everything that he's done for the community. And of course, all the other veterans, which I myself was there and and and, well, of course, we have the color guard. And so so it was a great response from our community honoring veterans. And I just want to thank everybody that honored our veterans in one way or another this time of the year on Veterans Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Just one more comment on, I want to thank the Challenger School because they they were involved in decorating the Christmas tree that's up here in the in front office. They made all the ornaments and they were, you know, we only asked for about a hundred and twenty five and they came in with about three hundred ornaments. But they volunteered that for us, so I want to thank the the school Challenger. And and the elves, you know, they had four elves volunteered to distribute the candy at the parade. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Just a reminder, on Friday at twelve o'clock, there's ninety four elementary children and a choir. It's going to come and sing their annual choir presentation to Mayor and Council and staff. So they're going to be, there's ninety four. Usually we have them at the lobby, but we can't fit ninety four kids in there. So we're going to have it in Cordova Park outside and hopefully everybody can make it.
That's unknown, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let me, also attended the Fresh Produce Association event up in Tucson, which was nice, but I wish we bring it back to Nogales. That's my goal. And besides that, basically, I want to make make it clear that. We are very open to having, you know. Electric cars up at the downtown areas. That's one of the reasons, also the post coming into that that park, right, Mr. Bermeus? That's the goal?
Eventually, yes.
To have the the UV chargers put downtown. So that that's going to be very good to bring, you know, people from Sarwarita Green Valley that have the UV cars. So that's going to be great. So with that said, any future items, agenda items? Okay, well, before I I close this meeting, I want to wish everybody some happy and safe holidays, you know.
Same to you, Mayor.
Yeah, but that's a housing.
Possibly a special.
Okay, there might be a special meeting. Well, there is going to be a special meeting on housing on the fourteenth. You know, pertaining to audits and all that. But, you know, for those that are here and those that are listening, I want to wish everybody safe and great holidays. Stay safe and God bless everybody. Thank you. With that said, I move to adjourn. All in favor? All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.